Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our meeting. Please note, the council's in attendance, full attendance, except for Ms. Solis, who's out. First item on our agenda is items from council. I have a few things. Anyone else have anything?
I have a couple.
Go right ahead.
Well, this morning, in the pouring rain, I had the opportunity to drive on Guy Grant between Salem and Mockingbird. And I know that that is a very expensive street for us to look at rebuilding. There are drainage problems. There may even be right away problems, I'm not sure. But I still think it's something that we should think about, talk about, maybe during the capital improvements time. But I won't remember it then, so I thought I'd bring it up now.
I'll add it to the list.
And my other one, still on streets, is that I'd really like to ask staff to look at our residential maintenance standards. I'm not necessarily advocating that they be changed, but with the complaints that we've gotten from some citizens, I'd really like to look at them and see if there's anything that we can do to take a look at them. I know this comes up every couple of years. But if we could just look at them and see if technologies change, or if there's anything that we could do differently.
And you would like for us to move away from the chip seal in the maintenance program?
I'd like to see us not have that be the finish, the chip seal not be the finish. I understand that it protects the base.
Sure.
And for the community, I understand that it keeps the base level, it keeps the base protected, so that the road stays and we don't have the dipping and the potholes. But the finish itself, it takes an awfully long time for it to get smooth.
Okay. I know that my neighborhood's fixing to get done, and I know that Mr. Bocknight lives near me, so we were preparing ourselves for the feedback that we would receive. But we have made some changes to the aggregate size and things like that.
Yes, and that has helped.
Extra sweepings, yes ma'am. But I do agree with you, it's always good to look. I would also add to your suggestion that basically a cost comparison. You know, if we can do X amount of feet for this dollar, how much does it cost more to do a better, different, I shouldn't say better, but a different process, which leaves a better product perceptually, the end result being just to protect the roads.
I think that's really what the question is.
That's a good suggestion. Is that anything else? Parks, I had asked, I'd like to hear about Riverside Park. There's, you know, the weather's getting nice, people are coming out. There's still fencing and some things closed off. And also specifically, is it the old Optimist Pavilion? Is that what that was?
Riverside Pavilion is what we call it, but it was Optimus.
Okay. You have plans for all that, any timelines?
We have began to start working on Grover's Bin, reinstalling the control post. We have a contract that council approved a couple of weeks ago for Fun of Bounds to come out and repair the playground. And so what we're hoping to is by the midpoint of April to get Grover's Bin open back to the gate that, you know, goes back to the very far side. We'll have to continue to work on the parking lot and that stuff later on. The Riverside Pavilion is on the group with the TML that is doing the roof repairs for everything, and that is in that project there. And so I talked to Andrew this afternoon, and they are going to be starting, I think, next Monday. Doesn't mean that that project's first, but that's when they're coming down to start all those different projects.
Okay. Okay. And now the restroom there in Grover's Bin will be closed a while. As I understand, the wastewater pipe runs along between the river and the road up towards the golf course up there, and it's literally gone, washed out.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be a much more serious fix.
Yeah, we're exploring different options on that right now, but have not come to a conclusion on what we're going to be doing yet.
Okay. So I just want people to understand that. It's not, we're not ignoring that restroom. It's important there by the playground, but it just, it's going to be a complicated fix.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And we didn't want to hold up opening that part of the park back up waiting on a restroom fix.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Is that something where we could put some portable restrooms up?
We've talked about that during maybe holidays and where you've got major, yeah. Long weekends and stuff, we've talked about doing that, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Now, you are fixing to come back on the MLK issue with the recommendation soon. Who's?
Yes. We're waiting right now. We've asked Tech Dot to do some mock-up on signs and some locations for us. And then, once we get that back from Tech Dot, we'll bring that back, and they are working on that.
Okay. And I had one other thing. I had been contacted by a citizen regarding a DirecTV service in town that does not carry local ABC, CBS, NBC channels. Apparently, some folks at DirecTV like to tell all the citizens that's because the city won't let them, which is completely false. I want to clear that up. And I don't know who at DirecTV. I spent about 20 minutes trying to find someone to call or email, you know, got distracted, I was busy. So, but for the citizens to know, we do not control what channels DirecTV has, if y'all get that complaint from anyone. Not that we get blamed for anything very often, right? But I just wanted to clear that up. And I appreciate the citizens letting me know they were being told that. Okay. Anything else, items from council? Seeing none, we'll move into citizens' communication. If anyone would like to come forward now and visit with us about anything? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll just move into our public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance declaring unopposed candidates elected to the offices of City Council Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, declaring an emergency, providing for savings and providing an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C1. If anyone would like to come forward now to speak about that item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C1. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve C1.
Second.
Motion and second. Probably no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, thank you. C2?
Is an ordinance amending the City of Victoria Master Thoroughfare Plan to guide the growth and development of the City of Victoria and its extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C2. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on C2. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve item C2.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. And any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Ayes have it. C3?
C3 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victoria, Texas, related to the disaster declaration issued by Mayor Paul Pelosi on August 24, 2017, in response to Hurricane Harvey, temporarily waiving certain building permit fees for residential properties with damage caused by Hurricane Harvey, declaring an emergency, providing for savings, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C3. Anyone would like to talk about that item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on C3. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item C3.
Second.
Motion and second. And any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There are three items on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved with a single vote. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20, 2018. Second, a resolution awarding the 2017-2018 sanitary sewer line cleaning project to all points Inspection Services Incorporated for their low bid of $93,341.89, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. And the third is an ordinance reviewing and renewing Chapter 15 of the Victoria City Code as it pertains to the city's juvenile curfew order, in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code, Section 370.002, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing a penalty not to exceed $500 upon conviction, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Ayes have it. All right. We have two items for Section E.
Item E1 is a resolution approving the real estate sales contract to convey 5,685 square feet of city-owned property located at the corner of Pine Street in Navarro to Edibrendo Martinez for $11,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the sale and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E1.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Are there any questions?
Yes, this is that lot that Tech Dot shaved some off when he did in Navarro, and this was the remainder. It's next to what, used to be a convenience store?
I don't know. Yes, I don't know if Tech Dot shaved.
Right. I don't know exactly whether or not that was a Tech Dot shaving, or whether we acquired the property in order to allow the expansion. It appears as though it was acquired around that time, but I don't really have history on the property.
Well, I was thinking it was back quite a ways, and it was a lot where they took some frontage off of it, leaving the residual pretty much unusable.
Yeah, you'd need a-
It used to be a convenience store right next door.
You'd need a variance to develop that, I think. Anyway. Okay, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? E2?
E2 is a resolution notifying the city manager's execution of an unimproved property contract for the purchase of 0.804 acres of real estate from Herman Hartsfield Jr. in the amount of $4,680 for Placido Benavita's street extension project and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E2.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any questions?
These are just the final two little slivers.
Well, we have Property Commerce that we're still working on, which is-
Home Depot.
Home Depot.
Home Depot. And then a small sliver from Walmart. So, those two. We'd like to get those closed pretty quickly. I know Property Commerce, Thomas, has been working on that contract back and forth with them, so.
Okay.
And we're ready to go to bid. It's designed and ready to go.
Little by little. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? All right.
God, that's a good question related to that. We're ready to go to bid. When we start, what end will we start on?
Oh, I don't know what end.
Because it just kind of has made me think, we've got one end taken care of.
Well, we need Property Commerce before we can go to bid.
Okay.
We need to close that deal. Walmart, we'd like to have Walmart, and we're working with them, but to go to bid, we don't need Walmart.
Okay.
It's a sidewalk alignment for Walmart. It's just a little over 1,000 square feet or something, so. But Property Commerce, we've got to have that.
Okay, you've got some reports for us?
Yes, but before we go to that, just real quick, nobody asked, but y'all will be sworn in on May 15 for the single-member districts, so just in case you have family members that want to come that night or whatever, so. May 15, and for the newspaper. So, yes.
You wait that long?
You do. When you're technically your term.
That's right.
You're still in your current term, so. We've got two annual reports, Fire Department and Library, and then Tanner thinks up first.
Well, good evening. Certainly a pleasure to be here tonight. Have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the happenings in the fire department. I really appreciate you speaking through your agenda and giving me the next 40 minutes or so to cover this. And I know the department heads are really thrilled about that, so. I think the over-under tonight's about 15, so we'll see what we can do about that, but. Before I start, I gave you also a colored brochure, glossy pack in front of you tonight. And what I'll say about that is that's just a document that we provide to all of our employees each year, and I thought I'd give you a copy as well. I'm not going to be, my presentation has some of the information in there, but I've got, what I've got on, that was printed for you is what we'll use. So with that, we'll get started. And I want to start off by saying that 2017 was quite a year for emergency response in our community. I talked a little bit about this at our public safety banquet, just as an opportunity to remind our employees of the significance of the call volume that we had in 2017, as well as the call types. We often talk to our employees about how important it is to retain as much information as possible as we're going through those training scenarios, because they truly run the gamut of call types. And 2017 was no different. As you look at the screen in front of you, we had some fairly significant fires in 2017, and I'll talk about those when we get to our property save versus loss data. Really, everything I want to talk about going forward would just be the benchmarking that we do. I mean, we do, we hold ourselves accountable to a lot of standards, a lot of times. We're constantly changing those as we seek accreditation in different areas. We seek to gather those times and bring those in and hold ourselves to that. We'll start off with just our annual response numbers. And if you look at 2017, we ran 11,224 calls, most we've ever had. So I say that every year as I stand up here and talk to you, and 2017 was no different. And if you kind of look down, as you run the fire calls, overpressure, rescue EMS, those types of calls, we really didn't have as much of an increase in our medical side. And that's where we've been seeing the increase from year to year, is in that medical side. But our fires had a slight increase of about 13% year over year. Our hazardous conditions had a 33% increase. And please recognize that there's about 10 different categories that will make up a hazardous condition, in the same way on service calls and some of these. This is just a real broad overview. Same way with our good intent calls, our false alarms, all those saw increases. And one of the things that continues to show, where we get to see increases in some of these calls, is cellphone and technology. You know, we get a lot of calls to things that don't turn out to be much, just because people see stuff and they think it might be something, and they call us. And so we do get a lot of false alarms, and we do get a lot of calls that are good intent calls, what we consider there. So, you know, with technology and everybody having a cellphone in their hand, everybody, we get a lot of calls for different things that, just at the end of the day, may not be a whole lot, so. So that's our calls, and I typically try to show you, you know, what percent of our calls we end up making outside of the borders of the city. And it continues to remain very steady at 20% from year to year to year, in what we do out in the county. So we saw about a 300, 300 call increase in the county, which represents 21% of our total call volume, so.
Keith?
Yes?
If you took out calls related to the hurricane, 100 calls maybe?
How many extra calls? I've actually got a slide on that.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll wait.
Okay. So, this is more, this slide here is typically slides that we like to show our guys. They're very competitive, and they like to brag amongst themselves about who's doing the most and who's not and whatnot. And so we try to show the call volume by station, and then we actually break it down by unit. And you can see that on an annual basis, our ambulances that are at Station 1 and Station 2 run neck and neck in overall call volumes. They each exceeded over 2,000 calls by themselves in 2017. So our medical calls continue to be the lion's share of what we respond to. I think this year it represented right about 71% of our total call volume, which is also helpful in the ambulance supplemental payment program that we're a part of, because that factors into the amount of money that we request from the federal government as a reimbursement. That number becomes important.
Tanner, would you explain what B3 M1 is on your chart?
Brush 3?
Okay.
And what was the other?
Well, just go down that one.
The Bs are brush trucks.
Yes.
Es are engines, Ls are ladders, battalion chief, which is supervisor, all the Ms are medics. The Ops 1 is our operation supervisor. The Q is a quint, which is the ladder truck at Station 1. And then the SV1 and the SV4s are the Tahos that are at Station 1 and Station 4 that respond to medical calls in place of the ladder trucks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forget. Everybody doesn't know what all those acronyms are.
I have another question before we move on. Looking back at the first one with the stations, and that some of them have so many more calls than others, the first thing that comes to my mind is, why don't you move the calls? But I realize it's a function of how close they are to the incident. And so the reason Station Number 6 is lower is because that's in a not densely populated area on the north side of town. Just for everybody looking at this to say, why don't they adjust it and make it fair to everybody?
Yeah, we-
It's really location.
It is a lot of location, and it's a lot of where those call types originate from. And so we do, we do look at our response areas, and if we see opportunities to grow in one particular district and shrink in another particular district, we look at that. But we still try to look at the mile and a half drivable space that we want to try to maintain around each station, you know, with the polygon. We've showed you all those in the past, where we have a polygon around each station. So we try not to get too far outside of that, so that we're making one response district much bigger than others, which were a little bit smaller. Station 6 has continued to improve a little bit, but it's, I think it's just going to be in time. We'll continue. Eventually, you'll see that about the same level as you see 4 and 5. It takes a little pressure off of 4 and 5, and 4 takes a little pressure off 2, you know, and 3 takes a little pressure off 1. And so they all, 1 and 2 are still, are always going to probably be our number 1 and 2 response stations in our community, just because of the age at which most of those homes have been built. And then also, just like you said, how densely populated it is.
Thank you.
Our performance, as I mentioned earlier, this is just a snapshot, certainly not all indicative of everything we do. But, and I won't go over each one of these, but I'll show you that, you know, the benchmarks that we hold ourselves to and hold our folks to, you know, are mentioned right there, and then the percent of time that we're achieving those. You know, 81%, our goal's 90%, and we want to work on the 90th percentile and not the average. I think that's important to note, is we, everything we try to measure ourselves against is a 90% instead of a 50% in an average. So you can kind of bounce down through there. One of the things that I think deserves some explanation is the property save versus loss, and our goal is for that to be at 95%. And in 2017, it was at 76%. And I would take you back to the first slide I showed you. And we had 32 buses that caught on fire, and that was, had about a $2.6 million loss. We had a diamond fiberglass fire that was a significant loss, and then we had the mosque fire. And all three of those averages then really had an impact on that number this year. And what I would submit is that as we pulled up on each one of those, the damage was done. There wasn't a whole lot that we could salvage in any of those events. And so if you take all three of those out, our actual percent is 91%. So it's a little bit closer to what we typically like to see in our property saved versus lost. A couple of new ones that we're showing this time for the first time is turnout time for fire, turnout time for EMS, and call processing time for dispatch. And as we just recently went through our best practices overview, these were things that we were encouraged to move more towards in our best practices, in order to keep us in line with what is the industry standard. So our folks weren't, didn't know about that until we'd already done it. But again, I think prior to this year, we were right around 86, 87% of our turnout times. So we'll continue to work on those. These numbers often tell us in areas that we need to improve as well, as well as the areas that we're really excelling in. And Mr. Bocknight, if you look at, you know, in August, right there, I mean, that's where we had our real spike. We're averaging a little under 900 a month, and that one, we went up almost 380 calls. So during the hurricane, we did have our hands full, and we responded to a lot of calls. We had a lot of fires right after the event. As we'd lost power, and so much damage had been done to a lot of people's homes, as they restored power, we started having a lot of different electrical issues. And so that was some of the increase we saw in fires as well. Our medical calls increased. And bear in mind that we stopped responding for about eight hours during the peak of that event, just because it was no longer safe to do so for us in driving the types of vehicles that we drive. Does that kind of answer your question, Mr. Bocknight?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just trying to normalize 2017 to 2016.
Yeah.
If I took out, you know, the bump that I knew we had in those hurricane-related calls.
If you take out those 350 calls, if we don't have that event, we still show an increase, but not quite, not quite to the same level. I want to touch a little bit on the Fire Marshal's Office. The Fire Marshal's Office has been on the investigation side of all these events this year, and they have really, they have spent a lot of hours investigating different call types. The mosque fire itself, our Fire Marshal estimates, he has personally spent over about 250 hours just in the investigation of that. And clearly, there's a trial that will begin sometime in April on that particular event. So there's a lot that goes into that that I don't think most people realize is the amount of behind-the-scenes things that goes into those investigations. But looking at some of the benchmarks that they have, is that one of the goals is all their plans reviewed within 10 days of receipt. 2017, they hit that at 98%. Fire code violations corrected within 90 days, 97%. Complete all high-risk occupancy fire inspections annually, they're only hitting that at 70%. And fire cause determination for 75% of investigations and 54% for 17. However, that, it's worth noting that they still have nine cases that remain open, that there's still an investigation, that the cause has not been determined yet. And that could make that number change. And then they installed over 447 smoke alarms, protecting 351 residents in 2017. So we have been supported with the State Farm in the past in buying different smoke alarms, so. Emergency Medical Service, you know, one of the, this year, we received the Gold Plus from the American Heart Association on the Mission Lifeline Program. It's the highest reward they give, and that was for our efforts in the way that we take care of folks having a heart attack or stimmy. That continues to be an area that I think us and the hospitals both really excel in and continue to shave time in every year, trying to improve the outcomes of our patients. Saw a 4% increase. We administer TXA. I wasn't even real sure what that was. Had to ask what that meant, what the significance of that was. But it is basically a product that we give somebody that's been in a traumatic accident that helps the blood clot better, as opposed to being as thin and running out, so. And then that's a big deal, as we carry that on the ambulances now. And then we also now have a year under our belt of doing rapid sequence innovation in the field. So we continue to challenge our paramedics to deliver the goods at the highest level. We're moving to an advanced tactical medic certification as we move forward, trying to, once again, improve their skill set and the service that we deliver out in the field. We try to keep up with industry standards and look and see what's out there. And most notably, we changed our diabetic protocol this year, which is a protocol that's been in place for a long time, just based off science. And so it's keeping up with the latest trends and making sure that we're delivering the service, you know, as it needs to be. We did an open house during EMS week at Station Number 4 this year. That was something different for us. And then, one of the neat things we've done is we bought these advanced decon machines. And so during the flu season, and, you know, some of the other things that we've gone through, we can now put this little machine in the back of the ambulance, turn it on, and about 20 minutes later, it completely decontaminates the back of the ambulance. And so trying to lessen the risk that our folks have in those day-to-day contacts with people that sometimes are very, very sick. And so we're very appreciative of the support we've received with those machines from you guys. I won't go into all this, but what I'll say is on the MS side, we're really benchmarking a lot. You can see on the airway, the things that are important to us that, as we moved to, for innovations. And if you don't know what an innovation is, that's where we're putting a tube into the lungs of somebody that can't breathe for theirself. And so when I talked about rapid sequence innovation just a few seconds ago, that's what's important. It's important that our skill set be very, very high before our medical director will agree to allow us to do that. Because when we do an RSI on a patient, we're basically taking away their ability to breathe. And so it's important that we secure that airway. So it's a very high-level skill. So airway success is very important. And then the cardiac, again, these are, these are areas that we work with the hospitals on. And then the cardiac, um, again, these are, these are areas that we work with the hospitals on, um, with, with DTAR and Citizens both in, in trying to ensure that we're meeting the, the, the benchmarks that are out there for patient care. Uh, strokes, you can see all the different things that we're measuring in the, the back of the ambulance for strokes and also for trauma. Um, we, our, our QA process continues to flourish as we bring our medical director and hos- uh, doctors from the each hospital and the traumas, uh, and review cases to look for opportunities of improvement. This is, uh, just, a- and I won't, I won't go into all these and I know it's kind of hard to read on the bottom, but just, again, just showing you on our cardiac, cardiac care data, uh, all the, some of the different things that we're measuring on the trauma side. Uh, but you know, we look at this, you know, if you look at the one on the far left, it's pain management. And that's a new category that we started measuring this year and forty-five percent kind of got our attention. And so we're looking to see, are we actually capturing that the right way? You know, is, is our, is our methodology good, um, in, in the way that we administer pain meds to patients without a rating of higher, seven or higher? CVA responses, uh, if you look in the far right, fifty percent percent of CVA patients with first emergency medical contact to TPA, uh, fifty percent. That continues to be a challenge for the medical world because CVAs can be, uh, so e- they can be so easily, uh, masked with other signs and symptoms. And pe- people don't always know they're having a stroke. Uh, people typically know they're having a chest pain and they can tell you more specifically if it's trauma. But strokes, that's just still that one that's, n- not everybody understands all the time. And so they don't report that sometimes right away. Sometimes by the time we get involved and we start that, when did this pain start? Or when did you notice this person's drooping in the face? Well, it was about two hours ago. Well, we're already, we've already lost on that case as far as our ninety minutes. And because we report that, um, so it's, uh, in working with the hospitals to, to ensure that they're a candidate for TPA, which is a thromboletic, which goes in and helps dissolve the clot, uh, so that they get full perfusion. But that's an education piece. It's, it's still, uh, we still, as a medical society, work to try to ensure that our folks understand to call nine-one-one when, when things aren't, aren't right. And, uh, that's when we do our best work is if we can get involved and get the hospital, get them to the hospital as soon as possible. Kind of looking at twenty eighteen, uh, some of the key projects that we're looking at, um, is, and I think we've mentioned up here through a grant that we're, we're trying to do a pretty progressive stop the bleed campaign. Um, and we have already started that. It's, it, it seems to be going very well. We've just finished, um, all the, the nurses at the, uh, school district. And then we're going to start branching that out into the teachers at the schools. We continue to grow that and that's with the rack, local rack and with both hospitals in trying to, uh, deliver that. We're also doing a program called Ready, Set, Go. Uh, Chief Martin, who's actually here, back here, is, is kind of overseeing that. And that's a wildland interface situation awareness for our folks that we protect out there on the perimeters of the community, uh, is educating them about having defensible space around their homes and, uh, getting that information out there. That's a program, um, a nationwide program. And then our public education, we're looking at actually implementing a Saturday training sessions, uh, in the community where we would, uh, do smoke alarm installations in that particular area of the community. Smokehouse safety demonstrations, as you can see, the, the, the new device, new house we have there. Fire extinguisher training, hands-only CPR, stop the bleed. Just looking for an opportunity to do some more education in smaller, uh, areas around the community. So that's, those are things that we're working on going into twenty eighteen. Lastly, I would like to say, um, publicly, you know, how, how much I appreciate our employees because none of this would be possible, um, w- without them. And we've got a fantastic group of employees that show up every day and put on the uniform and work hard for the people of this community. And, uh, and they do so with a smiling face and they, they lay it all on the line. Uh, I couldn't be prouder of, of the job that they do. And I'd, and also like to thank you for your support. You know, you, you continue to support us and give us the tools we need to be successful out there in the field. And then our city management, uh, we appreciate their guidance and their, their leadership, uh, as, as we move forward. So is there any questions that any of you might have?
I think I exceeded my fifteen minutes.
Surely you're not going to let him off the hook and ask him something.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you to you and all your employees. Last year wasn't an easy year for you all, I know, with big major fires and hurricane and, um, but your department did great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, the professionalism really showed in those high-profile incidents we had. One thing I do want to ask, you know, the county is a, a big part of this department. And I know I've asked you this before and I just can't remember. I know at certain times you visit with the county commissioners and to let them know all this wonderful stuff or you've presented the county commissioners to their court. Are you planning on something similar?
Yeah, typical, typical what I do is I take that report that you've got and I'll make one that, yeah, just like that. And I'll make one for the county. And, and then I give it to the mayor, uh, the mayor, I give it to the mayor and let you take care of that. And I give it to the county judge and, uh, I make myself available to them to meet on a, on a more one-on-one basis. And I also offer to go up and, and to do a presentation to their, to their whole group. Um, the county judge usually kind of dictates that and I, you know, I just follow suit with whatever his request is.
I know they care about their county residences, who, residents who also live in the city, I hope. So they would be interested in the service that they help fund. So I think it would be a great idea so they can understand the value because it's clear when you sit through this presentation, there's a lot going on.
Tanner, you met with the judge, what, January, February?
Yeah, just right after the first of the year.
Yeah, so he's, he's got the data and-
Yeah, and I, I, I sit down with him and, uh, kind of go over some things, find out what they want to see, what they don't want to see, h- how they want to see it, you know? Is, is there anything we can do to give them the information that they're looking for? Um, and so just to make sure that we have good, open communications and we're, they're seeing what is important to them for their, uh, respective districts as well.
Good, good, thank you. Okay.
So Dana, we'll talk about the library next and you have a handout too that's right behind the fire.
Good evening, council. I'm here to report on the state of the library twenty seventeen and provide some updates on our current projects this evening. In January of twenty seventeen, we started our new, um, five-year strategic plan. And the first part of our year through the summer really took off well. We were just running along really at a nice clip. The last half of twenty seventeen saw some changes in use patterns and in the way we provide, provide services, particularly following Hurricane Harvey. And it's almost as if we had two different years in one twelve-month time periods. So you're going to see a lot of that as I refer to maybe January through June, July, and then the last half of twenty seventeen. So I'm going to talk about each one of those separately. So from January to June twenty seventeen, our attendance at our early literacy, storytimes, crafts, collaborative technology programs were running at or above attendance levels for twenty sixteen. And on average, we were seeing thirty-five to forty percent increases in storytime attendance. Our spring break programs for six to seventeen-year-olds, we had almost six hundred participants versus two hundred and fifty in twenty sixteen. And then our robotics programs for all ages, we had close to six, six hundred participants between January and July. Our use of library materials by children was fifteen to twenty percent higher through July twenty seventeen. Usage of adult popular materials in physical format was about one to two percent higher through July twenty seventeen and as compared to July twenty sixteen. And the use of our online eBooks and downloadable audiobooks was around fifteen percent higher through July. And I have those, and you can see in those graphs, um, those red lines, those are twenty seventeen. I've got some larger versions of that. You can see when August hit and what happened after August, that big volatility, as I'm calling it. These are just some more details of what I've just spoken about, circulation numbers. So in August, we closed on the twenty-fourth and that's, this was due to Hurricane Harvey. We did not open our building back up to the public until September thirteenth. We were closed six operating days in August and nine days in September. And closure of the building was required due to water damage to our office spaces, meeting room, and near our main circulation desk. Luckily, our power was restored quickly. It came back on, on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth. And because of that, we were able to get fans into the building. Our HVAC system came up and was running. And that really, really saved us from the growth of mold and having that affect our materials. So our damage sheet rock was torn out, our ceiling tiles have been replaced. And staff were working in the building starting on August the thirtieth and they helped with the cleaning, both inside and outside the building. And we started answering phones and developing plans on how we were going to continue our services, even though our physical building was closed. So immediately after we got back in there, we started thinking about that. The two projects we decided to really focus on were how to get our physical materials into the hands of our users and how to continue to provide programs for families and children during that period of hurricane recovery. We did this by being very communicative on our Facebook page and through our phone lines. And I've given you the Facebook posting here on this slide that shows you what we posted just to be, make people really aware of what was going on in the building. We set up a system for checkout and we set up a pickup service outside of our employee entrance, our, um, horseshoe drive just off of Commercial Street. And then we encouraged people to download eBooks through our website. And we were able to find off-site space at St. Francis Episcopal Church to hold our six weekly storytimes. I think these strategies really helped us best meet community needs for our services at that point. And in looking at our September checkouts and materials, that number dropped with the library only checking out sixty percent of the materials that we did in September twenty sixteen. But when you remove the number of days we were closed, you kind of average those numbers out, our checkouts were pretty close to equal to twenty sixteen. We checked out about seventy-one fewer items per day. The other interesting thing that occurred is that our eBook checkouts through our website increased by fifteen percent in September of twenty seventeen over September twenty sixteen. So people were looking for alternative ways to keep getting access to their materials. So we ran our off-site storytimes at St. Francis from September twelfth until October thirty-first, serving almost fourteen hundred children and families during that time period. This attendance is lower than the twenty sixteen storytime attendance, but our number picked back up in November. We surpassed October. Our numbers dropped again in December. The cold weather in general really decreased our statistics in December. And we were closed for two days early in that month. If you remember, we had, um, loss of power and a major electrical panel replacement that we had to take care of. I've listed here some highlights from the last half of twenty seventeen, even though we did face a lot of challenges. I think that, um, there were a few things that I really wanted to point out. We were able in October, over a two-day time period, Red Cross volunteers came in and we had over a thousand people walk through our building, coming in to have access to our computers and get assistance from our library staff to apply for the Red Cross disaster grant funds. We had a hundred and fifty people attend our annual Star Wars reads event in October. And they told us, they said, "We're so glad you're having this. We really needed this. You know, this has been a very stressful time. It's really nice to have something to bring our children to." And we had eleven hundred and seventy people attend our gingerbread workshop. We held that at the community center and it was during two of the coldest days, that early December time period. And that was a slight increase over twenty sixteen. So another real positive thing that happened the last half of our year. So we did accomplish a few building improvements in twenty seventeen. We replaced flooring in our staff break room. We added the casual seating area that's near our front circulation desk as you come in through our main entrance, since pictured. And we purchased a 3D printer. We're now offering the service to the public and they can bring in their items to be printed and there is a fee that they pay for that service. So looking ahead to twenty eighteen, we're going to continue to work on the consistency and quality of our programs, providing efficiencies in our back office support departments, which will hopefully not be noticeable, but there will be some improvements to our services to our public. We're hoping to get new materials more quickly out to our users. We're going to continue to encourage the use of our community space by keeping it clean and up to date. We hope to see the addition of a family restroom. Replacement of the carpet in our meeting room, we hope is coming very soon. And we'll get that room back up and open and available for people to make reservations to use it. And final co- cosmetic hurricane damage repairs that need to be made in the interior of our building. So that was it and thank you for the opportunity to update you tonight on twenty seventeen at Victoria Public Library. Do I have any questions I can answer for you?
Dana, I want you to, uh, you know, your project, you kind of blazed over it pretty quickly, but what you did in the back office to get materials out through your, I think, you know, council needs to understand, you did an entire lean mapping process on that. And how many days did you reduce after doing your mapping process?
What we did was we studied how long it took from the moment that an, an physical item is ordered for the collection to the point where someone actually has it in their hands, like they, they put it on hold and they get a call and it's ready for them or it's out there on the new bookshelf. And our time from the point it, items ordered to the point it's delivered to the public was twenty-two days on average. We studied that at the first part of twenty seventeen. We then really looked closely at our processes and why was it taking twenty-two days? And we wanted to cut that, um, looked at what things were we doing that were unnecessary, how we could speed up processes, how we could make things more efficient. We cut that down to fourteen days. So we made quite, uh, I think, good headway in increasing the speed in which it takes to get those items out on the floor. So that's one of those back, back office, um, projects we worked on in twenty seventeen.
Like you said, the public never notices it, but it does speed up your processes, so.
Very good. I, I have to ask, if you didn't say, if you said it, I wasn't listening. What exactly do you do at the gingerbread house workshop?
That- If anybody wants to know, I have pictures on my phone of my, of my grandchildren.
Did you build a gingerbread house?
Out of graham crackers, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct. It's a simplified version. It's not the real difficult elaborate ones, but it gives those kids and families an opportunity to work together on a very simple gingerbread house, um, that is made out of graham crackers, a milk carton, icing and candy, yeah, so.
Okay, interesting. I may be there next year. I did notice too, you know, on the website, city website, you have some really cool stuff going on spring break. So I encourage if parents have little ones and need things to do, you look like you had three or four different activities.
Yes, we're running something every, um, every day next week, Monday through Friday. So it's either a teen event, a children's event, or a family event.
So hopefully people will take advantage of that. Thank you. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dana, good talk.
Is that all we have?
That's it.
We are adjourned. Thank you, council.
That's it.